Our pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America. It's a very important, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
As I said, I expect two more board members, but in top four, we have enough to go on things. Susan Reeves is a board member, and she notified us earlier today that she wasn't able to attend. She has come in on the Zoom system just to keep herself up to date on what's going on. She cannot vote, but she can comment or ask questions. So you can hear us all right, Susan? I think you're on mute, but...
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Okay. And Sean Hoffman, our consulting engineer, is also coming in remotely, obviously. And he can give his reports as we go through them, and obviously, he doesn't vote, so. The other thing I want to say is that earlier in the month, we did have the Kingdom Hall for Watchtower on the agenda. There's a major issue with that regarding the zoning, and that is a town board issue to resolve. It is not a planning board issue. And the town board is actively working on that to resolve it so that we can move that project forward. But it's not resolved yet. So we took that off the agenda because we really don't have the criteria to judge that project against at this point. Maybe that's going to be resolved by the next planning board meeting, maybe not. But I know they're working on it. We all want to get it resolved so that we can move forward with that project. We're going to reschedule that public hearing for our next meeting in June. So there will be no public hearing tonight. We will not address that project tonight in any way, shape, or form. Okay? So should I make a motion just to reschedule that?
Yes, a motion to reschedule to your June 4th planning board.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to reschedule that public hearing to June. Second it?
All in favor?
That's okay. Bill, you're okay with that? All right, so that's rescheduled. So we'll go to the public hearings for Tuxedo Reserve. And even though on the agenda, it says two public hearings, I'll just open one that'll cover both of them. And we'll do them one at a time, Mitch. We'll talk about North Ridge first. Describe the meeting or the project to the people here. I don't know how many people are here for that, but regardless. And then we'll ask the public for their comments. Word comments and the reports from the consultants. We'll do that when we get to those items during the regular. So I'll make a motion to open those public hearings. Second? All in favor? Okay, Mitch, you're on. This is Mitch Newman from Lennar.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate the introduction. Welcome, everybody. So I appreciate you scheduling us for the public hearing for both North Ridge and Upland Park. So we're going to have two witnesses that'll be talking and just recapping where we were in the presentation. I'll have Margaret here. Chuck will start off, and then Lisa will go through the architecture, which is what we heard in our presentation before. So with that, just quick intro, I'll open the chat.
Chuck, keep in mind that the board has probably heard all this already, but many people here haven't heard anything, probably. So let's start at the beginning.
Start from scratch?
Nineteen eighty.
Not that far.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. For the record, my name is Chuck. I'm a senior associate with the firm of Plank and Engineering. And our firm is responsible for developing the site civil engineering aspects of this project. We're going to talk about two communities today. The first is North Ridge, which...
Mr. Chairman, do you want him to do one?
We'll do one at a time.
So let's do one.
Do North Ridge, and then we'll ask for comments, and then we'll do the other one. Just so they're keeping, not get too complicated.
So the first community we're going to talk about is North Ridge. It's appropriately named. It's on the north side of the Tuxedo Reserve overall parcel. It's accessed from one of our main roads, Quail Road. Quail Road runs, in essence, through the development. One entrance and one exit. And off of that is what we call the North Ridge Development.
Chuck, just point out where Seventeen is. This is a point of reference.
Seventeen is referenced across the bottom of the page here. So this board is oriented the same way. This is Seventeen. This is Quail Road, highlighted in a bluish color. And then the North Ridge subdivision is located in the northern quadrant of that overall parcel. Kind of to orient you, this is Mountain Road here on this side. And these are the residential lots that are on our side of Mountain. The development includes seventy-two townhomes, two-story, three-bedroom, two-car garages, basically two parking cars and driveway. Access to the site is a fairly long, single access point. It's about two thousand feet long. And the reason for that is, one, we need to get past this jurisdictional wetland area. So we kind of skirt that to get into the kind of the more developable portions of the site. These little pockets here are other wetlands that we wanted to avoid. So if you kind of decide where the best place to develop on this parcel is, it turned out to be in this quadrant. And it's generally the high point of the site also. The road in and out is twenty-six and a half feet wide. It allows for parking on one side in accordance with the smart code. As I said, each of the units has two car garages and a double driveway that allow for access into the units. And they are basically centered around an oversized cul-de-sac loop room. There is a secondary emergency access that can be used by your fire department or other emergency vehicles to get into the site if necessary, and that does come off of Mountain Road. The stormwater management system for this site is comprised of a series of extended detention basins where we control the runoff from the site. So all the impervious area that is developed, the roadways, the houses, driveways, all are directed to one of the four perimeter stormwater management basins. And those provide two functions. They deal with water quality. So the goal is to detain runoff from impervious areas that contain pollutants, let them settle, and then discharge. The other component is flood control. So this design ensures that the post-development discharge, the engineering term for the amount of water that leaves the site after we get done developing, doesn't leave at a rate any faster than in the previous one. So the goal is, and the requirement is, that we don't impact any downstream system. So this is all designed to hold and meter out the stormwater from the impervious areas so that the impact downstream is mitigated. There's also, you know, independent utilities, sewer and water, that service this development, in fact, the entire Tuxedo Reserve. Each unit has its own sewer, its own water service. And ultimately, electric and potentially gas will be provided by Orange Rock. So one of the things about this site, there's about eighty to ninety-foot grade chains, depending on where you go from kind of the high point of the site off in either direction. But basically, what we've done is we set this on the top of the hill, and the road runs around the perimeter. So the outside units are on the downhill side and generally have what we call walkout conditions out of the basement. The ones on the inside, although not all of them, most of them have the opposite condition. So we worked with the topography and the grades to try and make this a fairly... We tried to fit this into the topography as best that we could. This area in the center, which originally in the prior plan was actually a big parking lot, we've managed to preserve and leave the trees there. And then you can see there's very substantial buffers all the way around the development. I mean, our impact here is about twenty-six acres of the whole parcel, which is well less than half of the overall parcel. So the amount of land that we actually disturb is pretty, is a reasonable amount considering what we're proposing. Lighting on this development, basically, we've got streetlights, and then we've got pole lights for everybody's driveway. And if you look kind of closely at the lighting plan, you'll notice that the streetlights are kind of spaced out pretty far. And that's because every one of these driveways is going to have its own little twelve-foot-high light at the driveway that each person controls. So as you travel through this section, for example, there's going to be a lot of light from those fixtures. Whereas here, we have a more kind of densely located falls, but they're only thirteen feet high. So we've tried to make sure that the light spill from these parcels is limited. And again, the majority of the light entering here comes from the units themselves. We do have a vegetation plan. We plant street trees. The stormwater management basins, which are these kind of active areas, all have landscaping to go along with them. And all those comply with the smart code requirements that basically govern this development in all aspects. That's kind of a general overview. I'd be glad to answer questions about this North Ridge section. Or you want to listen to the architecture?
Why don't we go with the architecture?
So Lisa's going to describe the configuration and the makeup of the units.
Evening, everyone. I think Chuck sort of stole some of my testimony a little bit, but that's okay. Sometimes it's helpful to hear it twice. So as we discussed, these are two-story townhomes. There are some that will be walkout conditions, whereas others will be in-ground basement conditions, depending on the location within this particular neighborhood of the overall community. This is an interesting one for us because we, within this collection, we have four different floor plan layouts, two of which allow for the owner's suite to be on the first floor, and two that allow for a master-up for those who are more concerned about having all bedrooms on the same floor. We have three bedrooms in all of the homes. They all include two and a half bath. We do have the basement with the option to finish the basement. And in the event that a homeowner or we decide that we're going to finish that basement, it will be a rec room with a full bath, so would add an additional bath to the homes. So what you're looking at here would be an in-ground condition. If we flip to the next sheet, one more, sorry. This would be our walkout condition. So in the event that the homes were in a walkout-conditioned basement, we would automatically include that ten-by-ten deck to give that outdoor living space off of that main living level. For those that are in-ground, we would be offering that deck as optional because we want to be able to provide that level of service for the homeowners who are on the in-ground basement conditions as well. As Chuck already discussed, we do have two-car garages. They do come equipped with the two-car driveways as well. That concludes the architectural presentation for this evening.
Could you just go over the square footage roughly so people have an idea of the scale?
Thank you. So within this home collection, there's four homes. They range from twenty-six to twenty-eight hundred square feet. Thank you.
Chuck? Want to deal with the questions on this first?
Yeah, if anybody in the audience has any questions, comments about this, please speak up.
There's a question.
Is this kind of a new ownership? Please repeat, please.
You should.
Okay, so individually owned? Okay, then how about maintenance then? As far as two people walk driveways and walkways and things like that?
There'll be a homeowner association, and in the association, it'll take care of all the exterior landscaping. We haven't exactly decided if it will include snow, who will help the driveways and service locks.
Landscaping as well?
It'll include maintaining the outside of the landscaping, yeah. Absolutely. Fourty there, though, we saw fantastic. But we are debating internally whether to add that level of service than some people will look at drive and service locks and sidewalks. The debate's probably going to land with yes included, but we have to decide, Jeff.
So could you please give your name for the record?
My name?
Yep.
Victoria B. D. O.
Any spoilers?
B.I.B.D.O.
Thank you.
And just one other point. The main roads throughout the whole development, those will eventually be dedicated to the town. So they will be town roads. But a lot of the side streets, if you will, those will be private, and those will be maintained by the HOA.
Correct. If I can answer that, this particular community, the road network that Chuck described, we needed one of those private roads. So the thinking is, if the HOA is already maintaining, the snow moves along the roads, that being able to live saying, "We the driveways." But those simple answers are never so simple to navigate now.
So if there are no other questions or comments about this one, why don't we move to the Upland Park?
Excuse me. John, hi. Just a request. So the folks on the line, could you repeat the question that the folks are asking from the audience so that we can hear that? Because right now, we're just hearing the response.
Okay, I should have given her the mic, but...
Thank you.
Okay.
So the other community that we're going to describe to you tonight is called Upland Park. It's located, North Ridge was to the north, and Upland Park is kind of at the south end. It also has access off of Quail Road, which is, as the chairman pointed out, one of the roads that will be publicly owned and maintained after we go through the process of building it and dedicating it. Then it becomes a maintenance responsibility. But until then, it's ours.
The way Quail Road comes out, goes in, goes out, just so that people understand, so that when they're driving, but then I know the first, the north end is the one by the work trailer right there. That'll be the north end.
Correct.
The south end is down by between the nursery and Jesse's Bagel area down there, correct?
Correct.
Just so people understand, when they look at this, they don't necessarily know where that's coming out.
Generally, on these boards, north is to the right, and south is to the left, as you're looking at it. So for us, like the six north and south, we're really talking about that being north and south. And the two driveways are the northern driveway here, and then the southern driveway down here. So hopefully, that helps get you orientated a little bit towards this. And basically, these developments, communities, for those of you that have been listening to us talk for the last five or six months, they all basically come off of one of the primary roads. Quail Road is one of the fundamental backbone roads to the development. And each of these communities generally kind of poke off of that in a direction. So Upland Park is very different than North Ridge. In North Ridge, we would kind of put in the category of kind of a traditional townhouse-type development, units four to six in a block, you know, common driveway locations, those kind of things. Upland Park is very different. There are three different unit types in Upland Park. There are fifty-one two-story townhomes. There's sixty-four three-story townhomes. And then there's a hundred and twenty what we call stacked townhomes. And I'm going to let Lisa describe those. But I will tell you that this configuration has a more closely knit feel to it. In the case of North Ridge, it was a single road with a loop, and everybody had access off of it. As you can see here, there's an entire network of roads that cuts through. There's a common area with a park in the middle. So this is a very different feel to this community, and the units have been designed accordingly. But the characteristics of it are very much the same. So the roadway network, slopes are varied, gradual, from zero to ten percent for the most part. There's all interconnected sidewalks that allow you to walk through the entire community on one side of the road or the other. This development has a little different hierarchy of streets. So generally, twenty-six and a half foot-wide roads, which are the major ones, again, are designed to allow parking on one side. Some of the narrow streets down to twenty-four feet only accommodate the driveways and no parking on either side. And then we have this kind of interesting design that goes along with what we call the stacked townhouses. So a stacked townhouse has a driveway in the back. So if you look at this row of units, for example, off of this main street, what you see if you're standing in the street, there's a sidewalk to a front door. No driveways. There may be a patio, there may be landscaping. But basically, you see a streetscape with a sidewalk towards the houses. And the driveways are all in the back. So they're accessed from an hour alley that allows you to get in and out. And this creates a much different feel from a street perspective because we've taken all these driveways and we put them in the back. So about half of the units here are designed that way. And you can tell which ones they are because they have these darker, these alleys that run in behind them. And that's really the thing that sets this community apart from North Ridge, for example. They all have very similar things. They all have sewer and water. They all have a very complicated stormwater management system that we designed to manage to runoff from it. They all have common areas, although North Ridge doesn't have an official kind of park area. Upland does. And so those are the similarities. And much of it is designed here to work around the wetlands, to be honest with you. We made this configuration in consideration of watercourses and wetlands that kind of sit here, sit here, sit here. If you were to highlight all those, you'd look up, well, it makes sense where they started to put the roads and the units. So similarities are utility-driven differences. This is a much different unit type, which Lisa will describe to you. And the configuration and the location of these units vary. This has that more kind of urban feel to it than it does suburban feel to it. And I think then I'll let Lisa describe the architecture.
Okay. So if I just may touch on something briefly with the overall map. Chuck had indicated the difference in the density in the two communities that we're looking at this evening. So this entire community was designed with the Commons area here being the core of the community. And it's very dense. It has a mixture of rentals and retails. And then as we go further out, we have more densely populated areas in these neighborhoods that are closest to the Commons, and then they become a little more spaced out as we move further away. So that would be the logic behind our differences of product offers. We will start with the stacked townhome. This is probably the most interesting in the sense that not only are the garages in the rear, but they live a lot like a townhome, even though it's living over top of living space. Each unit gets its own individual door. And then as we move through to the next page, you'll see that each has their own individual driveway garage as well. So it's a condo style that feels very much like, it's very old townhome style. This particular product is situated in eight, ten, twelve, and sixteen-unit buildings. But since it's two per stack, we'll call it, each of these is representative of two. So the longest run you're getting is really eight. It feels like an eighth-unit townhome, even though it's sixteen units contained within that space.
Do you have that color-coded smart plan?
Yes, I do.
That will explain what is stacked townhomes.
So as we did touch on, each one has its own individual garage and its own individual driveway, and they are located in the rear, which gives you that nice clean front streetscape, the nice windows, the nice door, and no driveways in the vicinity of that front facade. So this is our color-coded plan for a stacked town. Because while they are becoming more popular, still, there's a wide variety of people who don't really know how these live. So what we did to kind of simplify it is color-code where the various living areas are within that individual stack. So starting here on the first floor, you'll see the blue, and then it comes right into this main living area. That's what we refer to as our lower-level unit. It's approximately thirteen hundred square foot. It contains two bedrooms and two bathrooms. However, the bathrooms, the sleeping quarters are up on that second floor there. So you can enter through your private garage, or you can enter through your main entry here. And then the stairs here will take you to the back portion of that second floor where the sleeping quarters are. And you have your mechanical room and your washer and dryer up there as well. For the upper level, which is approximately twenty-one hundred square feet, you still have that lower-level space where the garage is, but you only have an entry for your, before you're in an area where you're walking up the stairs to get to your main living level. So your main living level on that upper unit is, it's contained on that second floor in the front portion of that home. These stairs here will take you up to the sleeping area, which contains three bedrooms, and you have two full baths up in the sleeping area with that outer room in the downstairs area there. Sorry about that. And the exterior of these particular units, we have to kind of transition from what our other homes look like to what the Commons area looks like. We've been calling this the feathering elevations so that it kind of marries all those communities together without creating... Our next home style contains that same feathering elevation. This is our three-story townhome. These homes were also shown in the West Terrace approvals. And in our four-unit building, we were challenged to kind of find a better way to integrate our interior units. Our original had the horizontal siding running all the way across, and these two units were somewhat blending together. So at the suggestion of the board, we did kind of make a modification and added alternate interior elevation with the vertical board pattern to create further separation so it's clear to see where those units divide. These homes are approximately twenty-four hundred square feet. They contain three bedrooms, three bathrooms, and that lower level is a finished-rec area, and that's from standard within the homes.
The square footage on the stacked, or I don't think you mentioned that?
Thirteen hundred for the lower and twenty-one hundred for the upper level. So we do have a little bit of separation, which again, just kind of appeals to a broader market. They're thirteen and twenty-one. These are twenty-four. And then the next ones we show will be a little bit bigger. These homes, because that main living level is on that second floor, we will also provide a deck of standards so that there is that outdoor living space off of the primary living level. And they also have two-car garages and the two-car driveways to match that as well. Our final homes within this particular neighborhood of the community is a two-story townhome. These are approximately twenty-five hundred square feet. They contain three bedrooms, two and a half bath, and these will have basement options as well. It will come standard as unfinished, but the finished basement will allow for a rec room and a full bath. They come inclusive with the two-car garage, and they also have the two-car driveway. And all the other features are relatively similar.
Good. Thank you, Lisa. Does anybody have any questions or comments on this part of the development? Okay. So with that, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. You have a second? Okay. So now we'll go to the regular meeting. I'll call that... I'll call that the order. And the first item is approval of the minutes from our April second meeting. Any board members have any questions about the minutes? Nope. So I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Our next item is Metro R Services. This is a seven-lot subdivision off of Warwick Brook Road. And Scott, if I could ask you to use the microphone and just introduce who you are and your role. And what's on the table for tonight is a, a routine ninety-day extension of the subdivision approval that we gave quite a few months ago. And we can only approve it for, or extend it for ninety days at a time.
Well, that's what your code says. The code is actually preempted by state law. Your code actually limits it to two ninety-day extensions. State law is unlimited, so it preempts that in this area. So if they're going to add an extension, they can ask for one extension of ninety days, two extensions of ninety days. But it should be done in ninety-day increments, but however many is up to you.
Okay, Scott?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen, planning board, my name is Scott Cecina of Brooklyn Lincoln Television. Here on behalf of the applicant, as was mentioned, we're looking for an extension of the conditionally approved subdivision. It's a seven-lot subdivision off of Warwick Brook. The plan proposes to cross Warwick Brook with a culvert-type structure, bridge-type structure, provide an access road with a hammerhead turnaround at the end. Seven lots, two of the, two of the driveways are shared driveways to try and limit a lot of the development areas to get around existing wetlands. And the Warwick Brook, which also has a fairly wide floodway associated with it and hundred-year floodplain. Development was pushed to the back of the site, further up the hill to avoid those areas. There's not really much else to it, to be completely honest. Mostly just buttoned houses up on the hill, trying to isolate as much, as much as possible, be as environmentally friendly as possible to the area as well. We're seeking, I would prefer, if the board would allow, two ninety-day extensions to avoid having to come back here potentially in three months. The big holdup that we have to, to finishing out the conditions of our, of our approval is realistically the bridge. We've been having some difficulty in dealing with bridge manufacturers as far as lead times and actually getting the bridge, as well as significant price sites since the actual approval. So that has led the applicant to look for potentially other bridge designers or providers of the bridge.
Just for members of the board who possibly weren't on the board when we started this. Each individual lot will have to come before the board for a site plan approval?
That's correct, yes. Each individual lot will have to come back to the planning board for a site plan approval for each of the seven lots. So it's not even going to be a fell swoop to get seven. Each one has to specifically come back before it's constructed. I believe that the idea is going to be the lots will get built as we go in through the project. Paul Moore, applicant.
Yes, it, it, it still has been spoke before on open air quite a few days. And once, once we get roadways in on it, you know, there will be some, some building. I have actually seen at least an architect working through the last so far. And that, that will be coming up, as we said, and road, and that will be presented. But anyhow, it is what Scott said, just pre-upending the design of, not pre-designing the bridge, but just a bad version of what the bridge was and I think some of the parts and stuff, but it stays. We've talked on, we're on it. I kind of, you know, with another lot that's, you know, it's a good for us all and get an entry here as well. That's pretty much what we're doing.
We can't do two nineties at one time, can we?
You can.
Oh, we can.
So the dates for one ninety would be August sixth, and if you wanted to do two ninety-day extensions, it would be November fifth.
Okay. Does anybody on the board have a question about this?
John, I, I do have a question. If I'm recollecting, recollecting correctly, the last time we met with Metro R, there was discussion about the tree clearing, and there's going to be a counting of how many trees were going to be taken down? Am I remembering that correctly?
I think so. Sean or Valerie? I wouldn't think of them.
There's the clearing and grading permit. Is that what, is that what you're talking about? The approved clearing?
Yeah, we had asked for a count of how many trees.
We had provided a map that had showed what trees were to be removed as part of the planning, filling and grading permit, which has already been executed.
Perfect.
I believe, I believe we had already sent you guys the map indicating all the limits of the company.
Well, if the perm, if that permit's been issued, the condition that prior to issuing that permit was that the applicant needed to identify on the plan and in the field the area for trees to be removed to avoid impacts on the Warwick Brook floodway. So I think that's the one.
That was provided.
That was, that was provided.
Okay, thank you.
No other questions? So I'll, I'll make a motion to grant two ninety-day extensions until November six.
Sixth. Fifth.
Aye.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Next item is a storage garage at eighty-three Salerno Road for John Satrial, who I believe. Do you want to explain the project very briefly?
Evening, everybody. I'm John Satrial, Susan, eighty-three Salerno. We moved in three years ago, and we have a storage shed. It's a drop-in shed. It's not on the foundation. We went before the zoning board were ready, received their approval. The configuration of our property is such that with the grade and the access, this is about one of the only places that we could put this. I guess it's the issue at hand is that it's front yard. So we did our public notice. We have no problem with our neighbors, we great neighbors. Everyone seems to be in agreement that doesn't offend anybody. It's a good-looking shed. It's screened in by landscaping. We'd be willing to put another tree or anything that helps to kind of soften it up. So, but it is, it's next to the driveway. It is the only spot that we can really access the motor equipment, snowplow, snow blower, lawn mower that we need to, you know, access. Any other spot on the property, we, we just wouldn't make sense for the, for the garage. So that's why we.
So we do have the zoning, the ZVA approval, right? There was one variance issued, right? I've seen the shed. It's an attractive shed. It says garage. We had to call it a nirage for technical reasons, but it's not a garage. It's not a two-car, even a one-car garage. It's one of these little sheds that you see in the parking lots of Lowe's or Home Depot, right? It's a prefabricated one.
No, it's actually, it was constructed, it's an Irish-made shed, got from upstate.
Just for the record, it complies with the definition of private garage, Joel.
Thank you.
And this is subdivision side plan and ARBA approval. That's what we'll be considering.
No, it was just site plan approval.
Site plan?
Just site plan.
Oh, it said, oh, yes, you're right, sorry. So anybody have any questions about this one? So I'll make a motion to approve the, the site plan?
Three seconds. Can we just review the resolution?
Okay, sure.
Sorry.
It's a very simple.
It's a very, very simple one. I just want to make sure that everybody's clear. I drafted for the board a draft resolution of conditional approval. And in the procedural history, obviously, if you adopt this resolution, you will be typing this as a type-two action under seeker. So no further environmental review is necessary. The requirement for a public hearing is discretionary. The board should determine whether or not you want to hold a public hearing in this application. And then I left a blank for the GML report. However, it's not within five hundred feet of any of the triggers, so that will come out, and I will note that as well. Section, this is going forward under section ninety-eight dash thirteen B of your code, which requires the planning board to make a finding that the approval of this garage would not cause a traffic, safety, or other hazard. So you do have to make that finding. If you adopt the resolution, the finding is incorporated herein. And then there's only one specific condition, which is prior to the signing of the plans, the applicant shall submit the plans to the town engineer for a final engineering review of the plans. Shall not be signed, bless you, until receipt of a letter from the town engineer indicating that the plans submitted for signature are in proper order and in compliance with this resolution. So I just want to go through that, make sure that the board determines whether or not a public hearing is necessary and makes the finding for the ninety-eight thirteen B requirement.
Excellent. I neglected to, Valerie, talk about your report.
Oh, yeah, no, I mean, I just, basically, my report finds that the, the application was complete. And so we don't have any specific comments.
And Sean, you don't have anything on this one either, I don't think.
No, Mr. Chairman, there's no engineering matters. As the applicant indicated, they've already gotten their ZVA approval. And I believe the building inspector has confirmed that the applicant meets requirements for the slope within the roadway.
And your home is at the end of a cul-de-sac. There's, there's no traffic.
It is, yes.
Okay, so I, I'll make a motion. I can waive the public hearing. A second on that?
Second.
And then now I think we can do the resolution, right?
Yes, and that will incorporate the finding and the type-two.
I'll make a motion to approve the, the site plan approval resolution.
Second.
Favor?
Hey, Rosa, thank you.
Okay, now we'll go to Tuxedo Reserve North Ridge again. I don't think we have to go through anything else, although I see Ashley has gotten up. Does she want to say anything?
So good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
So we're happy to entertain questions from the board first. We did receive comments from both town engineer, planners, so Ashley is prepared to respond to a few of those comments. But we're happy to entertain the board's.
Why don't we go to the reports? And then they can be addressed, and the board can ask their questions.
Perfect.
So Valerie, you want to start?
Yeah, do you want me to just kind of highlight both of them?
No, let's do, let's do one at a time.
Okay, so North Ridge, I mean, basically, you know, we just raised a couple of questions. I mean, again, this is dealing with conformance with the SMART code. We had some questions on the parking in terms of parking requirements and parking that's being provided. And so we wanted them to take a look at that, again, especially dealing with visitor parking. The other thing that we just raised in general, and I think Sean's memo goes into it a little bit more so, is just any waivers that will be requested by the applicant. Because there seems to be some deviation from the SMART code and really just identifying what those are. And then which appropriate boards would be providing those waivers. And then we also had some comments specifically with the landscaping in terms of cultivars. I spoke to Ashley, and some of those would be, we're going to identify as those as potential waivers that the planning board can give. They'd basically still be the native plants, but they were just different, slightly different cultivars of the native plants. And then we just raised some questions on the plant counts. And then we just had a couple of things on dealing with the architecture, just in terms of like defining some colors and specifically putting some things with the roof and the gutter gout counts.
Okay, thanks, Valerie. Sean, let me go through yours.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as the applicant indicated, I had filed reports with the board and with the applicant prior to the meeting. We did have a brief call with the applicant's consultants yesterday to go over some of those questions, which I'm sure Ashley's going to describe to you. What I'm going to do right now is I'm just going to hit some of the highlights of my written report. And if there's any questions, feel free to, to stop me, and we can go into more detail if you'd like. So in terms of the subdivision application, the subdivision is a little bit overlapping with the other subdivision applications. I think the applicant's going to need to clean that up before they make a submission to the county. This does require a realty subdivision review by the county. Previously, you recall, the applicant submitted a mitigation chart. There's a lot of mitigations in the special permit that are tied to building permit issuance numbers. It would be helpful, I think, for tracking those requirements if they would revise and update that mitigation chart and circulate that with any subsequent submissions. According to the regulating plan, which is a component of the special permit, there are requirements for civic spaces within North Ridge. There's actually supposed to be two. Those weren't really addressed on the plan, and I think the applicant's going to need to discuss those with you. In terms of bulk, and this ties in a little bit with Valerie was saying, I did notice that although the code allows two-point-five stories and thirty-five feet, the architectural elevations indicate that the applicant proposes a townhouse is thirty-five feet, nine and a half inches. It also indicates that you can't waive that. So I think the applicant's either going to have to revise their architecture slightly to comply or return to the town board. The road network follows the road hierarchy plan from the formulary plan and the special permit. I did make a recommendation that that be forwarded to the building inspector so he can do preliminary review for compliance with the fire code. I will remind the board that when this special permit has evolved over the years, the fire code in New York State was updated in 2020, so there may be some inconsistencies between the fire code and the special permit that, that should be worked out sooner rather than later. At your last meeting, the applicant described the un-prescribed parking that they proposed, so there'd be no striping. They would expect it to be self-policing. I did have a note that you wanted to discuss that a little bit further. I think now would be a good time this evening. Water and sewer, the applicant still owes calculations for water demand and sewer generation from North Ridge. I had a question regarding whether a pressure-reducing valve chamber was required because this is a little bit lower elevation-wise. And I also suggested the applicant look into a possible connection to mountain, now, I'm sorry, mountain road. Whenever you have two water systems and budding, it's usually good engineering practice to have them, for an emergency situation, be able to backfeed one or the other. And then lastly, stormwater. The applicant still owes a stormwater management report that really just looks at the update and modifications that they've made since the original swaps were filed.
Okay, thank you, Sean. The, the height issue, want to address that? And before you do, I spoke to Kelly before. Even though it's nine and a half inches roughly higher than allowed, there's no de minimis thing that kicks in here?
Not on the building height, no. That's actually one that you're specifically limited and cannot waive. There are other elements that have been raised by both Valerie and Sean in their memos in here tonight that I think the applicant is going to be making a supplemental submission to address those and request waivers in accordance with the terms of the special permit and the SMART code. We will comply with the building height. We will make the necessary corrections to ensure that.
Okay. Other questions from the board? Or anything you want to address that was brought up by Sean or Valerie?
So overall, the, the very technical comments, we do anticipate providing detailed written responses to each of the comments on the plan. If they have any questions on any of them, we'd like to set up a meeting with the consultants, like we've done in the past. But we do anticipate being able to meet the majority of them. We do have a couple of items that we'll be asking for waivers on. I don't know if you prefer that we go through everything at once for both subdivisions or both neighborhoods. We'll leave it to time.
Could you just mention what you'll be asking for waivers on?
Sure.
Just to know them.
So for the civic space for the Northridge area, we'll need to get back to on that one. We are going to be asking for waiver on the civic space for Upland, which I'll, maybe I'll talk about that next. curb widths, there were a number of areas where there were four-inch curbs specified in the SMART code. But we have six-inch curbs provided throughout the development for consistency purposes, so that would be a waiver. And then landscaping, as Valerie mentioned, there were a number of instances in the SMART code where just the root native plant was provided, for example, example, red maple, Acer rubrum. That's the only thing that's listed in the list, but we've provided October glory. So there's a variety of those instances where we've provided a cultivar because of design considerations or availability in the landscape trade. They're all native. We will be specifying, we'll be asking for waivers.
Questions from the board members? Susan?
No.
We're going to receive written, written copies of your response to all the, all the Sean's.
Yes, so obviously, they were very lengthy letters, so we are preparing detailed responses to each of the comments received from both Sean and from Valerie. We will be updating the plans to address those comments, and we'll also be providing a detailed list of any waivers being requested. So that's all right.
So John, we could discuss their responses once received by us and the next meeting or whenever that occurs?
Well, since you bring that up, let me throw something out. The other item, the Upland Park area, has a lot of the same comments.
Right, that's where we ended.
And we'll go through those. What I'm thinking of, our next meeting is four weeks from tonight. You don't have that extra week. And it's a lot of material to go through for the consultants. So what I'll throw out to Lennar and Brad, would it be advantageous to focus for the next meeting on one of those two, your choice? For that next meeting, I think we really want to give our consultants two weeks to review your changes. And they would give you two weeks to make the changes, modifications, whatever. And then focus on the next one. And maybe we could schedule a, an extra meeting, two or three weeks from our, our June meeting. So just think about that for a while while we go through the, the Upland Park area.
I just want to touch on one of the things from the North Ridge. There was a comment about parking. We are providing parking in the garages and the driveways, which is sufficient to meet the parking requirements for will be just themselves, as well as visitor parking, in addition to parking that's on the street. But we do not expect needing any parking waivers.
Ashley, when you speak next time, could you just use the mic?
Sure.
Well, for the people up there, and I actually can't really hear you over here, so. Usually you're right here, so that I, I don't have this problem all the way over there tonight.
Okay, Valerie, you want to go over your report on this?
Yeah, so Upland Park, there are very similar comments. So we did raise again the parking question on that, dealing with the requirements for visitor parking and just parking that's proposed versus required. We did, again, raise a question about what waivers were specifically asked, being asked for. We noted the, some things with the bicycle racks. And then also, we also noted, again, a couple of things with architecture in terms of for them to specify some additional information on the plans, just to confirm that they meet with the architectural design guidelines. And then landscaping, again, we noted all the, the plant cultivars that are different than the, than the code. And then the other thing is we noted a couple of other landscaping details in terms of planting and planting locations as well. So a lot of it's more landscaping and architecture.
Any questions on that from anybody? Okay, Sean, why don't you go through yours?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this one was a little bit unusual. And what I'm going to describe next is the reason we had a call with the applicant yesterday. So the subdivision plant that you have shows subdividing of the stacked townhouses. Now stacked townhouses, they're divided, as you've seen in tonight's presentation vertically, so someone owns the top and someone owns the bottom. In our discussion just of the applicant, we understand that the proposed subdivision was a drafting error and that the stacked townhouses are not intended to be fee simple. So there were a number of comments in my report that, that stemmed from that. And the applicant just indicated that that was an error and that will be corrected on the next submission. Sticking with the stacked townhouses, in the applicant's correspondence, they indicated that the stacked townhouses will be a mixture of two and three bedrooms. And that there's going to be the same number of two and three bedrooms. I would really appreciate if they could perhaps propose some mechanism to keep track of that, whether they know right now where those are going to be, maybe they could be identified on the plan, or some other mechanism for tracking, because it's going to be very difficult for your building department to keep track of how many two-bedroom stacked houses and three-bedroom stacked houses to make sure that we get out at the, you know, at the end of this, at the right number that there is supposed to be. Civic space, I think the applicant's going to discuss with you the waiver for the civic space. The regulating plan shows two civic spaces. Right now, they show one to be a park and other to be a vacant lot. I think that the waiver that they're going to request is the relocation of the civic space. The two civic spaces originally are supposed to be next to each other. Dimensional requirements, they had the same problem with the height, which I presume that they're going to fix. Roadway hierarchy, this was a little challenging. You've had a chance to closely look at the plan. You'll see that they've introduced alleys. This is the first time the board has considered alleys for this project. What they've done is they, from the special permit, they've extended one alley, they've eliminated one alley, and they're adding a new alley. So, you know, I think you should discuss this evening with Kelly what the process is, if that's a waiver process with you or if that needs to go elsewhere. I also am suggesting that this also go to the building inspector so he can do a fire code comparison. There is also a waiver for a sidewalk on Bridle. You remember Bridle was one of the roads that the town will eventually own. The special permit requires four-foot sidewalks along both sides. The applicant's proposing a five-foot sidewalk on one side. I understand that's something that can be waived. I think that there may have been some miscalculation in the parking demand shown on the plans, and I asked the applicant to double-check that on the re-submission. The stacked townhouses are in the T-five-one zone. That requires, similar to the commons, that they address bicycle storage, so there's requirements for bike racks. And then which, they have a well in this neighborhood. You're going to have to identify the water quality easements, two hundred feet off of that well, but similar to what they had done on West Paris. And then lastly, some portions of the water main have, I'm sorry, some portions of the subdivision have two water mains. One's a distribution main, the other's a transmission main. But I think the plan should identify which is which, so there's no mistakes in the field and everything gets connected properly in terms of connecting each house or townhouse to the water main that it should be connected to.
Okay, thank you, Sean. There's a big discrepancy, especially in Valerie's report, about the number of parking spaces required versus supply. Can you address that, explain it?
With.
And you would, please, thanks.
Thank you. So similar to in the other situation, we are providing two parking spaces in the garages for each unit, as well as two parking spaces in the driveways for each unit. So that more than meets the demand for the parking for the units, as well as provides for visitor capacity in addition to the on-street parking spaces that would be available for the townhomes. For the bicycle parking, we are providing bike racks within the park area here, which is the civic space. So that is also being addressed. In terms of, do you want me to try the next thing?
Does that resolve your concern about the parking or explain?
I mean, yeah, it sounds like, I mean, it does explain it, and then, you know, we'll just look at the revised plans to make sure the parking table reflects that. Because right now, the parking table doesn't reflect, you know, it doesn't reflect that in the zoning.
So there were a number of comments about updating tables for clarity, so we will definitely be addressing those comments from both consultants in the next submission. We don't anticipate asking for any waivers or variances from any of the dimensional requirements.
So you're going to resolve that two and a half foot additional height?
Yes.
Okay. How are you going to do that? Just curious.
I believe there was a question about whether it was calculated correctly when it was in the table in terms of how the grading.
Okay. So you're not going to change the appearance or?
No, we're not anticipating needing to change the architecture. We're adjusting the grading. In terms of the civic space outdoor area that Sean was mentioning, so in the original plan, there was an alleyway that went through this neighborhood right here. Because as you may remember, this neighborhood over here was going to be multifamily. So in order to accommodate the switch from multifamily to the stacked townhomes, we needed to reallocate some of the land. So now there is a new civic space park here, which has a playground, bike parking will serve, serve this neighborhood, as well as an open space here on the corner of Highland Avenue and Bridle Trail Road. So that would be an open green space there. These two parcels of land together are slightly less than the acreage that was in the original plan for that park. So we will be asking for a waiver for that relocation. We are going to see if we can make some adjustments so that the acreage is exactly the same, but we're not sure we can commit to that yet.
Could you point out the alley that's going away and the relocated alley, the new alley?
So there was an alley that went through here, because originally there was multifamily development here. So the alley shift went away. There's now a park here and townhomes around it. The new alley is behind the stacked townhomes. And the reason for that is so we can have, because of the grade in this area, but also so that we can have the front doors of these stacked townhomes right on the street. So this creates a very nice streetscape, the access to the garages and alleys to be from the rear. So we believe that this is an improvement to the plan. The swapping of these units is consistent with the smart code and does not require a waiver that is expressly permitted. So it's just the reallocation of where the civic space would be located and the addition of the alley that we would be asking for a waiver for.
So Kelly, who grants this type of waiver?
So there's a number of things, actually. Well, the building height is going to be resolved, so they don't need to go to the town board. I did speak with Brad earlier and yesterday about the various items that require waivers under the smart code. It actually comes to this board. The majority of them can be granted a waiver, however, or a modification. However, there are certain criteria that have to be met for each one. So what I've requested is that they set forth what they're actually asking a modification of from this to this and how it meets each of those criteria, so the board can really evaluate each one. There are some that are noted in Sean's memo. I'll say for like the curb height, where it says four-inch minimum, but they're allowed to have six inches, so they don't need something from that. If there is something that doesn't fall into any of those, then I'd ask the applicant to set forth where they believe that it is permitted. For example, the switching of the multifamily to the stacked townhouses, that is permitted. They don't need a waiver for anything like that. But there are some inconsistencies on the plans that both of your other consultants have pointed out. From a legal perspective, I picked up on the fact that they had, they were subdividing each of the stacked townhomes, but then vertically as well, so you can't obviously do that. So that's just, you know, a typo, a small clarification, but it has to be corrected on the plans. So I think that a lot of those will be corrected and flushed out with the updated plans and then supplemented by the responses to the comments like Ashley's doing and the specific requests to you, so that you know exactly what is being changed.
The waivers, would they be rolled into a resolution as a condition or are those separate items that we would have to vote on?
I would include them as findings in your, in whatever resolution. That way, again, each one is individually set forth for somebody ten years down the road that wants to look at it. They'll know. And like I did this evening, if you want to vote on them individually, you can. Or I would say that by incorporating them into the resolution you are making, so fine.
I think that's would be a cleaner way of doing it.
Yeah. There could be somewhere, it could go one way or the other, and then usually, you know, I bold italics and I put or, you know, however the board wants it, but it would be included in the findings section of any resolution that you.
So it seems like nothing at this point, since they're going to correct the heights, has, have to go to the town board. That's.
Correct. If they come up with something that they need a waiver from and upon review, I say it doesn't fall into the categories that you can waive. They can't find somewhere else in the special permit that it can. We'll talk about that with the applicant, but I think they'd probably fix it so they don't have to go back to the town board. But from the items that we have discussed tonight, with the exception of the building height, which now they're going to fix, they all come to you. And it might, Mr. Chairman, it might be helpful in the future for the applicant to identify at the onset of what waivers they're going to be looking for, because that way, then when Sean and I do our reviews, if we know that they are already identifying, like, let's say, for example, a parking waiver or a setback, you know, that way we'll know when we see other things that are amiss, then we know it's either an error or there's something that they didn't, you know, identify as a potential waiver. Or I feel like right now, reviewing this, sometimes it's like, I don't know if they realize that this is, is this incorrect or is it something that, you know, they're looking for a waiver for, and we don't have to worry about reviewing that, you know, as carefully in terms of whether it met the coders' needs.
Any questions from board members? Susan, you have any question? So what about splitting your?
Just off here on, on your thought, so look at the June calendar. So we would come back, well, June fourth and June eighteen?
Well, I, you know, we'd have to see who's available for a second meeting.
But that, that would be the idea, the second meeting.
Two to three weeks after the first.
One neighborhood early June and then the second neighborhood.
I don't know.
It, it may or may not work that way. I think what the chairman's asking is pick your favorite, move forward so that you can move forward faster with one, and then the second one could be on the heels of that. But dropping a lot of this information, and there's going to be a lot of changes on these plans, and giving all of us two weeks is a short period of time to then get that waiver. So that's why I say pick your favorite.
So let me, let me get, let me get the opinions of Valerie and Sean. Doing both for the June meeting, how doable or not doable is that?
I think it, it depends on how soon they plan to get this stuff back.
Well, I, I think we've already mentioned to the applicants that we'd like to give you and Sean at least two weeks to review this. So that means two weeks from tonight or today, they would have to make their submission. And that would only give them two weeks to do it, give you two weeks to do it.
I, I think we, we could, but I'm going to defer to Sean, because I know he's a little bit sometime, he has to review more of the technical stuff.
What do you think, Sean?
My, my thought on it is it may be preferable by the applicant to do one at a time, because when, as I think you said, Mr. Chairman, a lot of this, these items repeat. And if they were to, you know, clean it up and go through one revision, it may help with the second revision and may shorten that time. You know, if they think that they can get in two sets that address all these within whatever it is, two weeks, as long as, you know, what comes back really does address everything as much as possible. Like, you know, I'd hate to keep, you know, they only get to three quarters of the comments or something like that. I just want to make sure that they, they feel they can get to everything.
And just from a, from, from my perspective, which is, they do a much deeper review than I do. If the board is looking to have a draft resolution, not necessarily to act on, but to consider at your next meeting, which also in the preparation of doing that sometimes raises other issues that then need to be addressed. I have to wait until I get their review comments from the consultants, so doing both, I think, would be difficult.
I think, I don't want to interrupt. I, I think you'd get a better, you have a better chance of getting one approved in June. Concentrating on one, and would it really be that burdensome if the second one was reviewed at the John?
No, would not. Do you, do you mind if I address?
No, absolutely, go ahead. By the way, the July meeting is not the day before the Fourth of July.
It's the day before the day before.
So we wouldn't, we wouldn't, we wouldn't relocate or postpone that.
So it, it feels like that we're trending towards, let's just pick Upland Park. So we would have two weeks approximately to make the revisions that, we, we respect the fact that it sounds like a lot of revisions, but from our perspective, they're not really material. And some of them are just, it's a waiver, so there's not much to change. Some of them are parking. We think we're all already okay with parking. And building heights, we think will be okay. So that said, it sounds like the trend is, okay, we'll have two weeks to make revisions to the plans and submit a waiver memo or letter or any, any other supporting documents. And then we would stay on track for the June meeting just on Upland. And that would give your consultants the backend of the couple of weeks to prepare their memorandum, which hopefully is a, hopefully is an easy process, because we knocked away a chunk of the items, all of the items, dare I say, we'll see. It's hard to be perfect. It's hard to be perfect. And then at the same time, behind the scenes, we'll be making the Northridge revisions so that as soon as the June meeting hits or as soon as we have your memos on Upland Park, we'll then get the Northridge plans out so that they can then follow for a July. I'll say approval, whatever, the next process. So in reality, while it might have been slightly off of our internal game plan, nobody has to follow our game plan. We, you know, we have all kinds of corporate plans. It would trend towards a, a resolution, I don't mean a legal resolution, but a, a coming together of, hey, that looks good in June for Upland Park and whatever legally that means, votes, resolutions, or, or at least you'll be in position to potentially take action. And then July, we hope to put you in that same position for Northridge. So I want to ask one question. Chuck and Christina? Are, does that work for you?
It buys them more time.
There you go. Valerie and Sean, what, what would the submission deadline be for June 4th? Give you enough time, especially in light of, you have August, you can as well. Right, because the normal submission date would be May 24th.
And that's Memorial Day weekend.
So I want to, so for Christina to answer Mitch's question, she needs to understand what the submission date.
Okay, well, let's, let's bounce that off Valerie and Sean. Two weeks, say two weeks from today or one day till the Wednesday. That would give you almost two weeks to do your reviews on one. And I assume you're choosing Upland as the first one?
Correct. So May 22nd would be the submission date.
So how's, how's that sound?
That's, that's fine with me.
Sean?
Ben.
What is the, let me, let me get the opinions of the board on this approach. Any comments?
I'm all right with it.
He said that it wasn't burdensome to delay.
That's right, that's right. If it's not burdensome, then it gives them more time to.
Get things right the next.
Yeah, and there's no guarantee. So if it slips in June because of one few things, you could do that as well. Get the final approval in July if you can make it and then still do the other one, right?
Right. Well, I'm going to, and I think I can do this, a motion for you to prepare a draft resolution for June for Upland Park. And hopefully we can get that one approved.
Sure, that would be terrific. I just think I'm starting to hear a little bit of the scuffle about is that May 22nd might be a day or two. So maybe I just take a minute to talk to the engineers.
Sure.
But I'll take a second to your motion.
Well, we haven't.
Second, okay. For the draft resolution.
So go ahead, have your.
I, I don't need to even caucus that the request respectfully would be to have until Friday, May 24th to make the submission. It sounds like 200 days would be.
What do you, what do you think Sean? That, that would be our standard, the Friday before the, Friday before the meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I just didn't hear exactly what Brad had said. Did he say make a submission on May 24th?
Yeah, that's the Friday. That's our standard schedule.
If the applicant thinks that they can do that, that, that's fine. I just want to make sure that, you know, what, what comes in isn't rushed, that they think that they can, you know, get to those comments. They've seen those comments, they've had the opportunity to digest them. The other item I would suggest is if the board's okay with, you know, a consultant meeting as needed by the applicant, I'd be happy to do that as well to help them kind of meet that deadline.
Sean, I just took the mic so I can keep it here. So Sean, that, that would be fantastic. And yes, the extra two days would certainly allow to make sure that we get a full, complete submission in. And Sean, thank you. We'll probably take you up on your offer to talk between now and then.
So you need extra time for the one. How could you have possibly done two?
Trick question.
Any, you're okay with the, any? Okay, so it's Upland Park in June?
Upland Park, June. Northridge July.
And we're going to have a, we have a draft resolution coming for Upland Park.
Yes. And again, it's a draft. You don't need to act on it, but you'll have it and hopefully it will flush out any remaining issues that make.
And Valerie, yes, going forward, all waivers will be identified upfront with our materials, all right?
Hear you loud and clear.
Okay, so I think that resolves those two agenda. So the final, final thing is a 90 day extension request for the subdivision approval for Commons and Crow Road.
If you believe it were for extension, right?
And I, since I know now that we can give you two.
I heard that.
December 3rd.
So I'm certainly going to propose that.
Terrific.
Two, so roughly 180 days. But go ahead, whatever you.
That was perfect. Yeah, now we just need to get the health department to act.
So I'll make a motion to give, to grant a two 90 day extensions for this.
Second.
I'll approve.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Good night, thank you.
Okay. I just want to mention, you, you guys can, we, everybody can. But I, I just want to mention training requirements. It's May already and these things have a way of creeping up. I've signed up for a three hour course the end of May on case law, Kelly. Have you seen that website?
On which?
On Case Law, DeLakeland County Planning People. That's going to be at Orange Town Town Hall. So that knocks off three or four hours, so something that you can find at 6 to 9 or something like that.
I'm taking one on Thursday, a three hour at Ramapo Town Hall.
What's that one on?
Boards. What's that?
That's kind of an introductory, introduction to board.
Yeah, I figured it would be good for me since I'm only a year in.
So what day is the one we're talking about, May 1st?
I'll send, I'll send.
All right, send it.
All right, so that's to keep that in mind. So with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
One second.
Favorit, all right. Okay, thanks everybody.
Take care.